Welcome, everybody, to the Woodya Regional Vocational Technical High School School Board meeting Wednesday, January 14th, 2015. I'd like to have the pledge allegiance led by member troops.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Michigan, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call to order, any public comment? I don't see anybody.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move the approval of the minutes of December 10th, regular school committee meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a second for us, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, move the acceptance of December 10th executive session meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Treasury report.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Treasury's report for December 2014.
Is it a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The old business. Reports and communications, student representative, Mr. Bradley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent DeRosa, and all of the school committee members. Brell's basketball team is flying high to begin the season. They currently have an eight-and-o record, which includes wins against some league opponents and powerhouse Division One and Two teams. The team also won the first annual Woodya Tech Boosters Holiday Tournament, which was held right here at Woodya. The boys' basketball team is also enjoying some success. With an extremely tough league schedule, the team has a 500 record to begin the season, a great improvement from the season ago. They have competed in every game so far, with every game coming down to the wire. The wrestling team is working hard on the mats. They have already competed in some tournaments where they have had very good individual and team success. They look to improve and continue to work hard as the season goes on. The cheerleading team began their winter practices. They continue to practice daily as they prepare for upcoming competitions. The team has also been cheering for the basketball teams at their home games. The interact club hosted the meal at the Amayus House last month. They cooked, prepared, and served a meal to citizens at the shelter. They also went back to the Amayus House to help organize the food pantry. They hope to do another meal at the Amayus House, complete a fundraiser, and stay involved with the community in the future. The yearbook club has sent the cover of this year's yearbooks out to the printer, and they will be sending the senior section in the next coming weeks. They have raised $1,000 from senior portraits and will be teaming up with the marketing department to help find ways to offset the cost of printing. They sent out a letter to parents of seniors asking for baby pictures for the yearbook. The multicultural club had a presentation last Thursday from students of Scottish and British heritages. The students presented common traditions of the heritages and shared some neat facts. The club would also like to thank the Woodya community for donating 34 coats and jackets for the annual Anton's Cleaners Coat for Kids program. The drama club is in full swing rehearsals for the Adams Family Play. The pit orchestra is almost completely hired, the costuming plot is underway, and carpentry and CAD have started working on sets and props. The actors are very excited, as there is only a mere seven weeks left before opening night. The prom committee held another meeting last week to vote on the theme of the prom and had to come up with a list of songs to be played on prom night. The committee voted on the Great Gatsby theme for the Class of 2015 prom. Many other ideas will be planned in the coming weeks. The key club helped to organize the distribution of gifts to local families in need. They also helped at the annual Salvation Army Christmas castle, in addition to serving a breakfast with Santa. They also distributed $1,000 worth of food coupons to four different food pantries. That's all I have for you today.
Good job. Thank you.
Very nice.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Very good job.
Maybe you can introduce the next up on the agenda.
Mr. Bradley, Senior.
All right, he's got it.
Boys' varsity football team.
Thank you very much. Appreciate inviting us here. We had more members. Today's Flag Football Day for a lot of the kids on the football team, so they're playing up in Plastow, New Hampshire. So we're a little short on numbers, but I think a couple others are on their way. But we just want to thank everybody for their support, superintendent, the principal, the faculty, the staff, and everybody that we had there, school committee, for being behind us. We had an outstanding season, ended up with nine and three, and also the state vocational Super Bowl championship, which we won down at Neshoba Tech, beating Blackstone Valley Tech. So it was just a great season, and the support that we had here all year, the fans, I think we had another outstanding record here at attendance. So it just keeps growing and getting better and better. And without the, we had 24 seniors that were unbelievable for us, and the dedication that they made through their entire career here at Woodya Tech. And the hardest part was saying goodbye that last game, where we've been together for so long, four years, and they knew, and the parents, we probably set the record for staying the longest on the field. They were shutting the lights off. They just didn't want to leave the field. There was more pictures, pictures being taken by all the parents and the relatives to be there, and it was just a great moment, a moment they'll never forget the rest of their lives. And we had a couple players here, two captains, Connor and Sid Taylor, that, you know, without their support and their help and leadership and guidance, we wouldn't have been this successful.
Congratulations.
Any questions for Mr. Bradley?
Or Sid? And the good thing about it, the colleges that are coming down here and looking at our players, we had 18 kids there, and we probably had about 16 of the, were 3.0 or better, great point averages. So they're coming down from all over, a lot of these universities and colleges, all over the eastern border, just not in New England, but up and down the east coast.
That's wonderful.
Which speaks very highly about the type of student athletes that we have here at the school.
Yes, Charlie.
I just want to say that I went to a couple of games. One game was a little bit lopsided, and one was pretty close, but I noticed that the same intensity was throughout the game, no matter what the score was. And I noticed that there was a lot of kids, when they came off the field, they were like welcomed by the players that weren't in the game at the time. I think that's very good for the team to show, to support to their own, even their own players, that aren't playing as much as others. So I think, and that breeds, you know, competitive atmosphere, and whether you win or lose, it's what it's all about, I think.
Well, I think we stress that the seniors here will be able to tell you that a lot of times, programs will say, the sophomore's got to pick up this, the sophomore's got to pick up, get the water and that. We have the seniors do it, so they show the leadership and the role. So in the future, you know, it isn't the sophomore, the young people that get, are the ones that have to do it. We expect the seniors to be able to accomplish all those goals that we have down there, the practices and the games.
That's great.
And didn't you win some kind of an award recently?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you explain that?
Speak to that, Coach.
I was fortunate to be named by the Boston Globe Coach of the Year for the 2014 season. So it's an accomplishment, but it's nice, but without players that we have here and the support that we have here and at the school and the principal and the superintendent, we can't accomplish any of this. And the boosters, boosters are behind us all the time. I can't leave them out. But, you know, all those dreams and that, and the things that these kids will have for the rest of their lives, your people here allowing us to accomplish that, speaks very highly about what we have here at the school from the top, top on down. So I want to thank all of you people for allowing us to compete, and not just in football, in all sports here. And I think we're out there known, every time I want to go schedule a game, people say, oh, no, we can't play, you guys are too good, you know? So we have that name and reputation out there that speaks very highly. So, you know, we're scheduling in all sports. A lot of these, you know, we're Division Three and Division Four, but if you look at our schedule, our non-league games, we're playing all these Division Ones. The other night, you know, the girls' basketball knocked off North Andover High School, and that didn't go too well over there. But, you know, it was all smiles and the phone calls that we receive here at Woodya Tech, people just congratulating us, you know, the David and Goliath story there and how we accomplish all of it. Everybody wants to know, how are you doing all this? And we just get great student athletes here at the school that we have here, and, you know, they're going on to universities and colleges all around the country here, and not just in sports, but in all these programs that we have here, which is very nice.
Congratulations, Coach.
Congratulations.
I just want to say one thing that, I don't know if everybody realizes this, but, you know, in most other communities, most of the athletes start in the lower elementary grades. And so by the time they get to the high school, they know each other, where they come from and, you know. But at Woodya, you know, we got all these different communities, we get, we're getting athletes that don't even know each other when they walk on the field as a freshman.
That's true.
But I think it's very commendable for Mr. Bradley and the other coaches and the other sports to gel these kids so quickly and harmlessly to, you know, to have this success.
Well, I think that you look at, what's our backbone here at the athletics department is our freshman coaches, just as you said, Charlie, that they have to grab all these athletes, student athletes, who are playing for the first time, or don't know each other, they're coming from anywhere, from, you know, Haville all the way to the beach area and beyond. And to put them all together and work as a team, our freshman coaches do a great job, and then that just, they inherit that on to the, at the next level. So our coaches, we're very fortunate to have coaches that we have here at Woodya Tech.
We're very fortunate with all our staff and our students, and we know that.
And the teachers, because the teachers are there, I get it all the time.
The whole staff.
They all want to know what time, and, you know, just the other day, we have, Friday night, we have Holy Name of Central Catholic coming in, the Division One school, the powerhouse of Central Mass, number one team in Central Mass. They play all these teams, they can't get games. They, they have to play different states to get games, they're coming in here. And the teachers, they just wonder, what time's the game? What, what can we do? How can we help set up? And it just speaks highly about the teachers, the academic teachers and the vocational teachers that we have here at the school. We're very fortunate.
Everybody's invested, and that's a wonderful thing to see.
It is.
You don't see that in a lot of schools.
You don't see that.
No, you don't.
At 2:00, you see the parking lot, everybody.
Out the door.
But to see the teachers and everybody come from such great distance and coming back here to watch and support all these teams.
Mr. Bradley, how many kids did you have on the field in the last couple of games? How many kids do you take to the games?
For, for football?
Football, yes, I'm sorry.
We had, we didn't have enough uniforms. We ran out, we had 87.
Wow.
That's just sophomores up.
That's unbelievable. The reason why I ask that, it's a coincidence, Mr. Superintendent, you know, we're talking about the budget tonight, Mr. Bradley's here. Very great job, but not only that.
With his new football uniforms, I might add.
Oh, yeah. They earned it. One thing I want to say is, Principal Lynch, if it wasn't for you with the boosters, Ms. Lynch is big behind the boosters, and I want to thank you, too. It's a very, very big thing. Without the boosters, Mr. Bradley, we'd have problems.
We'd have a lot of problems. And Ms. Lynch, a lot of people don't see it, you know, she's there, the booster meetings, 6:30, 6 o'clock, 6:30, everybody's going home, but she stays here and just, you know, gets her work done and comes to make sure that the boosters are well-supported and helps to get what you need, because that's a hard job being a boosters and trying to get people to volunteer, come back and volunteer your time and work, you know, that's tough.
Yeah.
And if we're not there to help them and give them support, as Ms. Lynch is, then we'd be lost, because that's the bloodline of all the school athletic programs.
Any other questions? Thank you. And what time is that game Friday night?
6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Architects, KBA.
They're just going to need one minute, Mr. Chairman, just to set up their boards. Kara, Maureen, Harry, if you people want to come up back here to see, anybody that wants to come up to see the boards, can come up back.
I want the company with the PowerPoint presentation.
This is so old.
Mr. Bradley, do you want to watch this presentation for the future of the school?
Sure. Yeah, there's some sports things in there.
Yeah, some, if you support.
Yeah. A couple of sports items in here.
There's chairs over here, we have some vacancies, so this comfy, comfy chair. Yeah. I think there's another one there, too.
Yeah, this one right there.
Yeah, this one here and this one over there. Oops. I think it was like, can't see. She's Mr. Tully. There was like some wonky little thing underneath.
Harry, just don't listen to him.
He's down on Florida.
I usually don't.
We all keep our phones near us as well.
Let's go.
All set?
All set.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Kevin Buckley, and I'm with KBA Architects, and I'll probably stand out here in front of the boards a little bit. Just a very brief, quick intro with a few boards in the background while I speak, but in the last eight months, we've been working on a facility study of your building, and we got in here starting in June. We've been through the entire building, and a lot of aspects of the building were looked at. First, we start with the facility itself, what kind of condition it's in. I do want to note right off the bat that for a building over 40 years old, it has been incredibly well-maintained. The facilities you have have been nursed along and in great shape, and I think the MSBA ultimately will see that, and that's very important when you're looking for funding in the future, that they know that those projects they're going to fund have been well-maintained over the years, so that they're, you know, giving out funds and they know it's going to be well taken care of into the future. Just real briefly, so we looked at the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, we looked at those facilities. Obviously, things are tired, they're worn out, as much as you've tried to replace things along the way, after 40-plus years, it's just time for replacement. Along with these type of studies, once you get into any kind of program that exceeds 30% of your assessed value, and your, your building is assessed for 29 million, now, you could not replace this building for 29 million, but that's what the assessed value is, and that's what they look at from both the handicapped access board as well as fire protection. Once you exceed thresholds, you're then required to bring everything up to code, the eighth edition building code, seismic code for structural support during seismic activity, code compliance for handicapped accessibility to the building, that's ramps, doors, hardware, all your access points, as well as signage, you know, the fire alarm, pull stations at the right height, and that takes you right into fire protection, where this building doesn't have sprinklers, you would exceed the threshold, so would have to put sprinklers throughout the building. If you look at the 200-page report we have before you and go through that in detail, you'll see we kind of took it systematically from that first assessment of the overall infrastructure and took it all the way through teacher analysis. We put out a, what do they call that, Survey Monkey Steve that goes online. Teachers had a great response to that. It gives a good overview, the positives, the negatives, and how that plays into what we're seeing as engineers, to what the people are seeing that use the building every day. Ultimately, what it takes us to, is it gets us to a point in which we try to assess what would the cost be to replace the building, and not replace the building in its total structure, because the building has good bones. It's a complete renovation, so soup to nuts from the windows, the energy efficiency, the boilers, the mechanical systems, the surfaces, and that shows at the end of the report, and that's always the shocking point. But to do this project right, you'd need somewhere north of $65 million. Now, that's hard costs and soft costs, so the building itself, to get a contractor and to bid it, it's probably high 45, 46,000, and we're basing that on 2015 numbers. I will tell you that it's a long process to get you through the MSBA. What we're going to do is assist Kara and the administration to file a statement of interest if this board sees fit to do so in the next month or so. The statement of interest just gets you into the pipeline. Those statements of interest that are filed in the spring of each year are then looked at by the fall of that year. So the MSBA won't even be able to look at this until the fall and make a decision, and what they've been averaging, about 200 projects for capital construction projects like this are submitted on a yearly basis, and they're approving about 16 at a time. And part of that is, they would like to approve more, they're very generous with the funds they have available, but at the same time, because of the economy, because of the recession we went through, the penny that comes off everybody's sales tax that funds this program has been a lot lower than they anticipated. They, they had hoped to have somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 billion in the pot, and I think they're around $600 million on a yearly basis. So until the economy picks up and they start seeing more, they're pretty much at that type of limit for number of projects per year. But it doesn't mean that this project, that's been 42-plus years without a major renovation, wouldn't be one of the ones that they look at first. So generally, that's just an overview of what we had, there's all kinds of aspects in there in terms of, we brought in our consultants for code review and handicapped accessibility, ultimately leading us to what it would cost to do the work. That's all I had for intro, and I'm more than happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Yes.
Well, I'd say there's several parts of the report that I really liked about extending the, making the cafeteria larger, enclosing the library, air filtration, HVAC system. I thought a lot of those things had a lot of merit.
Yeah, and that's because you want the living environment of the building to improve, not just to replace surfaces and replace lights, but we looked at the library, and with that open corridor above, by putting up some glass, you'd still have the visual aspect of it, you'd still have the light, you'd still be able to see in there, but acoustically, the library would improve in that regard. The cafeteria is a very good point you brought up. The cafeteria, it's required that MSBA don't fund any project that exceeds three lunches. They want the educational program to be able to be more efficient and more successful with only three lunch seatings at a time. So we would suggest, based on the numbers and then the four seatings that you have, by expanding that out, you'll be able to get more students in there. You'll also see it towards the back of the book, a green-lined form, that's called the space summary form, that the MSBA requires to be done at later sessions. We like to do it, it's just our first stab at it, and once you became a capital construction project and you were in the MSBA pipeline, they work with us on the submission of that, and they come out and review it with you. But by doing it early, it gives us a chance to highlight some of the key issues with square footages, where things are lacking, and as the MSBA assesses this project, this study would be part of the backup information that a statement of interest would be providing.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any major concerns that need to be addressed right away that are a little bit easier than part of the whole project, safety or otherwise? I noticed on the roof project, gas pipelines weren't secured, or things like that that could be handled on a more routine basis while you're waiting to fund it?
I think, we're not going anywhere with the submission of this project. The completion of this document brings us to the end of our services, but we're going to be around, we're happy to sit down and interpret the document with the administration. If there were some repair things you wanted to get to this summer or next, we could maybe highlight that. I think that's a discussion point. We didn't see any specific safety issues, because so many things are grandfathered in, and that's why I said you'd have to do handicapped accessibility, you'd have to do sprinklers. But neither of those, you have a good fire alarm system working now, you have the proper egresses that we could see. So I think from a life safety standpoint, there were no glaring issues, but there's always things you could fix up, there's always repair projects you could try to maintain.
Something that jumped pages of them.
I'm sorry?
We got a whole bucket.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Concerns, yes.
Do you have any estimate of what the reimbursement rate is?
I'd have to defer to Kara, but the reimbursement rate is...
67% on the roof.
Was it 67?
Yes.
So it's looked at, it's looked at by the MSBA every year, your demographics, your economy, a lot of things, so they would assess that. So if Bill's saying that 67% was used for the roof, then you could figure in that as a starting point. Now, I just want to be clear, too, on reimbursement, it's 67% of all reimbursable items, and the MSBA always has some items that will be identified right up front. So it wouldn't be a full 67% of every dollar spent, but it's still a significant, the program we have in Massachusetts is second to none. It's still a remarkable program.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Well, this, this study doesn't address, like, the, the fields, like, the soccer field.
The fields, the parking lot, everything.
Not the park, the soccer field back there, I didn't notice.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's a description in here. I mean, obviously, we always recommend on any of the high school projects we've been doing, in fact, we've done this on our middle schools and elementary schools as well, is we've, in most cases, been putting in synthetic fields and rubber running tracks, because the maintenance is so much less, the longevity, there's no changeover from seasons, everybody can play on it year-round, they even have specialized snowplows.
Well, that field back there is terrible. I mean, the kids are playing soccer on a, on a cow field.
Yes.
Wring ankles.
So if you, if you went to a synthetic surface, the MSBA doesn't reimburse on that. However, they allow you to keep it in your program as there would be some other non-reimbursable items, because they realize you're never going to get a better per-dollar use than at the time a contractor bids on a big project like this. So they allow it to be in there, they allow it to be funded and appropriated for, we just identify those items within the package.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? I didn't see that. Overall, the information in this report leads to the following. I just highlighted a couple of things that were, it kind of sums everything up. You talked about the building being 42 years old, the structure's pretty good, but we know the HVAC system is, it's outdated. If we went and looked at every little, little item in this book, it would take you days and weeks and months just to analyze it. The site in general is in reasonable condition. That pretty much sums up a lot of things. The onsite parking, we know we need some improvements on, but we're just going to take this in, start talking about it, and see what the next step is. I've looked at a lot of different plans, and you get a lot of good information in here.
And at any time there's questions or a group of questions, and you want us to come back before you, we will do so.
We can do whatever.
We'll explain anything within the report. Absolutely.
Any other questions, anyone? Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn to the gym space and the parking outside the gym.
Can we just get back to our agenda?
Just, may I have one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
How is something like this ever be phased so you're still in operation?
That would be part of what the architects and the contractors would work on.
But that's possible.
It is possible. Greatalol is going through a similar project around the same size and scope there in business, opening a new cafeteria at the end of the month.
Could be multi-years.
Yes.
If we're the architect up at Greatalol, and that's exactly what we did, we established what would be the sweet space, in that case, we're wrapping up the cafeteria this month, a lot of spaces, and the kids will move down to that, and then other spaces have been used as cafeteria spaces, and they're going to get renovated and designed for that. It's a phased program, and we're putting the factory manager at risk. We had originally anticipated a three-year duration, and we're able to do it in two years.
Thank you. Very good job. Let's get back to our agenda, Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. For informational purposes in front of you, we have the hiring of an evening brochure design and hiring of a coach, and that's it for personnel. In terms of budget, we had our first budget meeting tonight with the executive subcommittee to discuss the FY '16 budget. We came in with a 9.19% budget increase, which will be reduced at the next executive subcommittee meeting, and I also want to mention that seven of our member communities have had an increase in enrollment, so regardless of what we do with the budget, there are seven communities that will have an increase in assessment just based upon population. In terms of an MCAS update, the November retest results are in, all juniors who took the exam have passed. Currently, we have 100% pass rate in ELA, 100% pass rate in math, and a 95% pass rate in biology. The biology retest is February 2nd and 3rd. We're offering a free biology after-school program. In terms of my superintendent's update, on Thursday, December 11, I attended a meeting of the Baker-Polito Transition Team. At that meeting, we broke up into groups to discuss policies and concerns with education, and I worked with and chaired the school-to-work group. On Friday, December 12, with the executive subcommittee to discuss the FY '16 budget. We came in with a 9.19% budget increase, which will be reduced at the next executive subcommittee meeting. And I also want to mention that seven of our member communities have had an increase in enrollment. So regardless of what we do with the budget, there are seven communities that will have an increase in assessment just based upon population. In terms of an MCAS update, the November retest results are in. All juniors who took the exam have passed. Currently, we have 100% pass rate in ELA, 100% pass rate in math, and a 95% pass rate in biology. The biology retest is February 2nd and 3rd. We're offering a free biology after-school program. In terms of my superintendent's update, on Thursday, December 11, I attended a meeting of the Baker-Polito transition team. At that meeting, we broke up into groups to discuss policies and concerns with education, and I worked with and chaired the school-to-work group. On Friday, December 12, I attended the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable. It was an executive assistance luncheon. On Tuesday, December 16, I hosted a superintendent's luncheon here for district superintendents. Michelle Robinson from Amesbury came, and Carol Jacobs from Georgetown. On Friday, December 19, I attended a meeting of the Baker-Polito transition team again. Today, I attended the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association meeting at the Lanham Club. There was a presentation from the Mass Association of School Superintendents to talk about some of the new initiatives that are coming forth from the department. In terms of outside project, Carpentry is working on a shed for Triton, and in Newberry, we're looking into doing some printing for the town clerk. Next, I furnished for the committee a mid-year update on my goals. As you know, when the law changed on educator evaluation a few years ago, we had to change the format. So what I did for you tonight is I broke my goals up, my activities up into what strands in the goals they met with, and that's yours for informational purpose. If you have any comments, I'd be glad to entertain that. Next, we were able to obtain another scholarship. We obtained a $3,000 scholarship from Dr. Steve St. Germain, a dentist in Merrimack. I would like to thank Dr. St. Germain, with whom I communicated, for this generous scholarship. This will be for students graduating in health occupations. And as you know, I need permission of the committee to accept the scholarship.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That's the end of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, any questions?
One comment on your update on your goals. I just wanted to commend you. I read through your goals, the amount of time you spend, extra meetings, going to meet people, roundtables, chambers of commerce, rotary clubs, all these things that you do are commendable and part of your job, but I think you do excellent. And you work with the newly-elected governor, the transition team, business, those are all excellent pieces, and I can't say how proud I am to have you as a superintendent.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Tucker. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Superintendent? Thank you. Principal, Ms. Lynch, please. Sorry I embarrassed you earlier.
Thank you. That was very nice, but really, the boosters, parents, and families do all the work. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, and Superintendent DeRosa. As we mentioned at the last meeting, a fund was set up to help some of our students and their families that are having difficult financial times. With the help of many staff members and some local agencies, including the United Way of Chelmsford UPS, we were able to raise over $5,000. I want to send out a sincere thank you to Cheryl Beegan and Elaine Kevkus. They worked for days shopping, wrapping, and so many other staff members who shopped, wrapped, and delivered and contributed to the fund. We were able to help out over 40 families, 40 students and their families, so it definitely was a worthwhile thing. And I just, you know, I can't thank people enough for really helping out. It's very difficult for many people at this time of the year, so again, a very big thank you. Also, before the break, we had our winter concert. Our students and many of our talented staff participated, and it was a great way to get in the holiday spirit. Students are beginning to prepare for mid-year exams starting next week. They will begin on January 21 and continue through the January 23. We also use this opportunity to work with our freshmen, and we call it our halftime show. At this time, we work with students on career plans, shop safety protocols, employability skills, and we have guest presenters. It's a wonderful opportunity to have some fun but get some important vocational work completed. We will start looking at the program of studies to complete course selection for the next couple of months in order to build the master schedule for next year. That's all I have for you tonight.
Any questions for the principal? Phil Beattie, thank you. Very good job.
Thank you.
Business manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Superintendent DeRosa. Happy New Year to all. It's hard to believe, but six months have gone by, and you have in front of you, in your packet actually, the July to December variance report. And you will notice that there are a lot of lines with green, which means that we have balances in those lines, and some lines in yellow. And right now, we definitely have an excess of green lines over yellow lines. There are a couple of things I would like to point out because I thought it was important that you be aware of them. One is that you will see that the electrical line is a yellow. It's over budget at this point. It was one of the items that was reduced last year when we were doing the budget, and of course, the electrical rates went up. We did manage to get some decent rates, but still, the rates have gone up, so that line is negative, and I wanted to point that out to you. The other thing I wanted to point out to you is typically in the budget in this district, the retiree health insurance and the active employee health insurance have been budgeted on the same line. And I think it's a little bit more transparent and easier to predict and extrapolate and budget for next year if they're separated. So what I did this year was I set up a separate expense line, and we are expensing the retiree insurance expenses on a separate line, but they weren't budgeted on that line. So you will see a negative in that account, but you will see money in the active retiree account where we budgeted it. And it's going to look like that until I clean it up at the end of the year, but I did not want you to be concerned if you saw a large negative number there. It's simply that I'm breaking them out for reporting purposes. Other than that, everything seems to be on track. We have been very proactive because we have, you know, in anticipation of the 9C cuts, which we're still waiting for clarity on, we have frozen the budget for discretionary spending. So hopefully, you know, those positive lines will stay there, and it looks like we are on track as to where we need to be. And that is my report for this quarter, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Any questions? Yes.
I just wanted to say that I reviewed this. I asked some questions with the business manager, and she was very performative in explaining some of these things, and they're all going to be tied together by the end of the year, so I'm very pleased with the performance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Kara?
Kara, it's okay. I just wanted to ask, what is the special event? It says added security, special EV. I just assumed it meant event. Does that...
When we have events here, such as the open house, athletic events, we arrange with the contract company for additional coverage, special events, and it goes on that line. So anything extra that we ask the security company to do. This year, we have some additional expenses because we have, we're down one security staff person, so we have had to call in some extra coverage. Okay?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. I was just curious.
Yes. I noticed you have a large for the computer supplies and networking. Did we have a large project with that or something?
We bought a couple of Scantrons for our MCAS scanning.
A couple of what?
Scantron machines for the MCAS scanning. But there are other overage, there's available funds in some other, some software lines and some supply lines. So yes, we have to buy some special machines for when we do the analysis of the MCAS and the pre-testings and things like, not MCAS, I have the wrong phrase.
Midterms.
DDMs, okay. So we bought two additional machines to help expedite the analysis of those exams.
Of which exams, the MCAS?
The DDMs.
Oh.
That help to prepare the students for the MCAS.
The assessments the teachers are using for district-determined measures for pre-test and end-of-course test and mid-year.
So it's kind of one of these fill-in-the-doc thing and you feed it through or...
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but there's lines that have available funds to offset.
So any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's go. Committee reports. Policy update.
They were done this month, Mr. Chairman, no need.
Variance analysts.
What's done?
Budget review.
Done.
Superintendent update, done. February annual agenda items. Budget review.
Yeah, we'll work on the budget again next month.
Subcommittee reports. Executive, we met tonight, and we reviewed the first part of look at the budget, and we'll be getting back to you again, set in another meeting, correct?
Right. The next executive will be before the February school committee meeting, February 11.
Okay, instructional personnel.
Has not met, Mr. Chairman, and no need.
Okay. Plan operations.
We have not met, and I don't believe there's a need for a meeting at this time.
Salary negotiation.
Yes, the salary negotiation. Met with the bargaining unit, first meeting mostly was introduction and some basic issues, which we're going to discuss later in the executive session.
Yes.
And we do have the minutes, which were in the auxiliary packet that we have to vote on. So entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
January 7.
Any questions?
Second.
Who seconded?
Oh.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Policy, Mr. Irving?
We didn't meet, Mr. Chairman.
School building committee, wastewater?
Didn't meet, Mr. Chairman.
All right, meetings. We have executive subcommittee. Yes.
Going back, there was a question I wanted to ask, and I forgot. When I'm reading through the paperwork, they were saying they held the elections, the school elections, on their iPads, and I was wondering how that went.
Do we have that answer, Maureen?
How successful that was, or... I thought that was very interesting.
Actually, had an update today. It's going very well.
Yeah.
At this point, about half the freshman class is voted, so we're still waiting on the other half, but it's going very well.
Good. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry to...
Okay, we have executive subcommittee meeting February 11 at 5:30. Next scheduled regular school board meeting will be February 11, 7 o'clock. Do we have any new business? Okay, executive session. I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee and to conduct contract negotiations with the non-union personnel. Superintendent, and upon completion of executive session, we'll return to open session.
Summer?
I wait to do road call on this. Road call. Member Lacy?
Here.
Member True?
Here.
Member Mansfield?
Yes.
Member Botchley?
Yes.
Member Labella?
Yes.
Member Murphy?
Yes.
Member Moran?
Yes.
Member Gilbert?
Yes.
Member Taka?
Yes.
The chair? Yes. Thank you. Make a motion to return. Open session.
We need a second.
We have a second?
Backing.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.